Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the Holbrook Board of Selectmen will open a public hearing under Chapter 40, Section 56. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 6th, 2016 at 7:15 in Holbrook Town Hall, Selectmen's King Meeting Room 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts. The purpose of this meeting is to provide an open forum for the discussion of local property tax rate policy. The Board of Assessors will provide information and data relevant to making a logical determination of a final tax rate. The Department of Revenue will provide the assessors with the minimum residential factor that can legally be used in establishing a tax rate for each classification of property. So we have motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'll start. I have, you have a slide that looks like this as an overview, and I thought I'd give an overview of this, and then Patrick Herring, the principal assessor, will get into the nuts and bolts and the motions. So, you know, we've talked a lot about increases in taxes as a result of the school building project, and this kind of illustrates that. If you see this table, it shows the increase in the taxes in terms of what we're levying. And if you look at it, the main variable here that's influencing it is the new school. If you look at our other outside debt, it actually dropped just a little bit by 15,000, so that's a, that comes down a little bit. The operating budget is increasing by 1.46 percent. As you are well aware, you know, Prop 2 and 1/2 allows the operating budget to go up 2 and 1/2 percent. The rate that's being proposed is based on the budget, and it's increasing the taxes on, in terms of the non-school impact taxes on, at 1 and 1.46 percent. So what does that mean? What that means is anything between 2 and 1/2 percent, anything less than 2 and 1/2 percent generates what they refer to as excess levy capacity, and you carry that into future years. The reason we're able to generate this excess capacity, the reason we don't need to go all the way up to 2 and 1/2 percent on our levy is, if you recall, at town meeting, we used 153,000 in free cash to offset the tax increase. Our new growth, the actual new growth increase was 136,000 above what we had budgeted in new growth. And our local receipts, combining local receipts and our, which includes our state aid, went up 228,000. So that basically, that adds up to an amount of money that we did not have to pass on to the taxpayers. And then the bottom right just is the rate that's being proposed tonight. As Patrick will, I'm sure, mention, it's not fixed here. I mean, it might fluctuate, you know, in small ways because it still needs to be certified by the state.
Okay. Patrick, it's all yours?
So, calendar year is coming to an end, and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Assessors to present information to you to make a decision on your split for this year for your taxes. It's a monumental task to put these numbers together, so on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the town clerk, Jean Marie, the treasurer, Paul. I don't want to butcher your last name, so I'm not going to say it. The town accountant, Beth Mosley, and also the administrator, Tim Gordon. So the steps I'm just going to run through are the steps of how information is proposed to the state and how it's certified through a process to set your tax rate. So, in each year, the town shall determine fair cash valuation, which has been done this year. This is an interim year, meaning that it's not a full-fledged revaluation year. So, but we are mandated now to adjust values to market each year in a mini revaluation, if you will. So this year, we are utilizing the 2015 sales to come up with a value for January 1st of 2016. We did propose the values and submitted them to the Department of Revenue when they were approved on October 24th. So that's the first step in this rate approval. The final certification of the values in new growth were approved by the Department of Revenue through the Bureau of Local Assessment on November 10th. So we know the values must reflect a fair market value for January 1st of each year. We did utilize the calendar year 2015 sales. So the market in Holbrook is very strong residential-wise. You know, it's definitely a positive change that's happening in the town for this fiscal year. The overall value of Holbrook increased 4.4 percent. And to break it down by the different classes, the residential class, total value rose 4.6 percent. Commercial lagging down around 1.23 percent, industrial 2.2, and personal property had a great increase, 8.9 percent, mainly due to utility and telecommunication within the town. So the total taxable value of the town is $1,135,197,649, which is that 4.4 percent increase in the, for this year. The residential percent of that value is 85.81 percent of the value as residential in this town. Commercial, industrial, and personal property make up the rest, which is around 14.19 percent. So the growth that was calculated this year, we went out and visited 509 properties. 310 of those properties contributed to the growth. In personal property, 80 accounts were reviewed and 46 contributed to the growth. There were 13 properties this year classified as new construction. The data collection provided an additional $316,387 to the levy limit, an increase of 44 percent over the prior year FY '16, which the growth was 219,779. So tonight, the Board of Selectmen are charged with setting the tax policy for this fiscal year. That is to say how the tax levy will be allocated between the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. In a nutshell, the tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. If you were to have no shift, it would be a single rate, which would be the uniform tax rate. But historically, Holbrook has shifted the burden onto the commercial-industrial property class. Currently, the shift is 1.69 percent. So the tax bill, if you were to remain at that shift, the tax bill this year, and these are hypothetical numbers because the tax rates are not set for this fiscal year yet, but in estimating, the tax bill for the average single-family home will increase approximately 11 percent. The commercial, industrial, and personal property would increase approximately 8 percent. In terms of dollars, now the values have increased this year. A home, a single-family home that was assessed an average last year was 253,077. The tax rate last year was 1964, and the average tax bill was $4,984 approximately. So that value this year, with the market increase, it would go from the 253,777 to an average value this year of about 265,196. A hypothetical rate that we are proposing is $20.90, which would increase that average tax bill to $5,542, which is approximately $558 over last year. The commercial-industrial property, little harder to calculate an average, but last year, if a, if a commercial was valued at 392,105, at the commercial rate of 3753, the average commercial tax bill last year was 14,717. With their increase, it would increase that average value to 39, about $400,000 with a tax rate of $39.87. It would boost that average tax, yearly tax bill to $15,908, which is an increase of about $1,192. So tonight, it's mainly a decision on this shift. Like I said, it's currently at 1.69. Anything above that number, 1.7 or above, would increase the rate on the commercial, and anything below the 1.69 would increase the rate on the residential. I also attached a spreadsheet of how those shifts would work. It's the second page of this spreadsheet, and I highlighted where the town is right now on the 1.69. So reading from the left to the right, the left column being the CIP shift, right now it's 1.69. If you follow that across to the last five columns, it shows you what the shift is. It's approximately $20.90 for the residential and $39.87 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. And this is just an illustration to show you, if you were to shift higher or lower, what would happen to the tax rate this year. If there are any questions so far?
None of a good year.
It's a good year if you're selling real estate. It's a good year because you're having a brand-new school built in the town. I think it's attracting people to the town. The values are definitely up. It could be one of the factors, you know, pointing towards that.
The values on your residential, but if I remember correctly, we're at 14 something like percent on commercial. Were we up to about 18 percent five years ago, six years ago?
Well, it depends on what you look at. When you do the shift now, it is at 18 percent because you're shifting that, a percentage to the commercial. If there were no shift whatsoever, it is 14 percent of the town is the value, actual value. So this year, there was no, not much growth at all in commercial real estate, so nothing's being built. The main thing that increased in the commercial, industrial, personal property was the personal property because the infrastructure's being replaced within the town by the utility companies and the telecommunication companies. So that's where your main growth is coming from in that category.
Has that shift of the 1.69 always made the difference between the 18 that you say that it really is, if we were?
Yeah. It's used, I don't know exactly how you used it in the past, but you can only shift up to 1.75. I wouldn't recommend.
We were there once.
Yeah. It may have been used as a tool where commercial usually, in a small town like this, would never increase at the rate of residential real estate, possibly to offset the increase on the residential. So you could shift more to commercial to try to possibly lower the residential burden, but like I said, I wouldn't recommend it if you are trying to attract any business to the town.
The increase that we have from the schools, like this year, it's 3 million. How does, I guess it goes down a little bit, but how soon does it start to have a meaningful drop?
Decrease? I'd have to defer that to Paul.
Decrease to 77,000 dollars every year.
Every year.
Which isn't much, right? $77,000? Yeah. So you figure this year, the addition of $2.90, 39 cents has been added for the borrowing of the school, $2.39 out of the, this hypothetical tax rate that we're talking about. So that's, that's the difference this year in the increase in tax. It'll level at that. I mean, it's not going up anymore because there's no more borrowing. It's just it's now going to be level and decrease at $77,000 a year, approximately.
Some of your last payment will be there, is that it?
Is it 20 years, Paul?
That's correct.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. So I definitely won't be here.
Just to add to that, that's correct, it's going down at that rate. There's a couple of things at play. Keep in mind, we're not finished with the borrowing on the school. There might be a little bit more borrowing that needs to take place, but at the same time, you know, we have some savings that we're seeing in the project itself, so that's offsetting that, and we have still a good amount of contingency in the budget that if we don't have to use that, obviously, we're not going to have to borrow against it. So as of right now, we have this one bond for $38.5 million at 3.14 percent, which is significantly less than what we had originally budgeted for when we were presenting the project to the public.
And the rest, there is another amount, another bond?
Yeah, so there's, there is 6 million short-term borrowing that we are currently paying on as well. So we're paying on the 38.5 plus the 6. So that's 34.5. Our, our maximum is 40, let's see.
Forty-three?
Yeah, yeah, 40, I think it's 40, 43. I got it. Here we go. I'm sorry, the maximum was 47. We had the premium that, if you recall, town meeting applied the premium to future borrowing, so that brings it down to 46 million. We're at about a million in savings now, I think, plus or minus. So that brings us down to 45 million, and we still have all that contingency. So my point being, it's kind of a bit of a moving target, but so far, we're doing well with the interest rates, and we're doing well with saving some money on the construction itself.
Right. Mr. Costa?
So it's going down 77, but the impact to the taxes is roughly capped out now. So over time, the rest of the taxes go up by 2 and 1/2 percent as we go. With this borrowing, whatever that amount is that the average taxpayer is paying, is now pretty much capped out. So in 20 years, when the tax bills go up 2 and 1/2 percent, or some percentage over a 20-year period, the amount that we're paying today will be actually less by $77,000 per year 20 years from now. So the portion of the tax bill that it takes up will be lower as time, every year goes by.
Good. Any questions for the board at this point? No? Do you want to continue, Patrick?
All right, so to carry on, there are exemptions that could possibly be adopted by the town. There's a residential exemption that the makeup of the town, it is a shift within the residential class. It doesn't raise any extra money. It's just shifting within the residential class, and what this is for is it would tax non-owner-occupied properties at a higher rate. It's mainly used in cities where there are a lot of multifamilies that are owned by individuals that the residential class within that city that live in their properties would get somewhat of a break if they were on the lower end of the value. So this shifts to not only the people who are non-owners, but then it would shift to the higher-valued properties within the town. The other areas that this would be utilized also is in summer residence, where the summer residents, this would be shifted on to them, and the people who live year-round in the community would possibly get a break if they were on the lower end of the values within the town. So like I said, the makeup of this town, it's mainly a owner-occupied residentially town, so this would not work as it is proposed to do, and consistently, the Board of Assessors have recommended that it not be adopted, but it is a decision made by the selectmen. The other is a small commercial exemption, which on the face of it is a good idea. It's a 10 percent shift within the commercial properties. The catch with this one is most businesses don't own and occupy the property. Usually, it's tenants within the property, like across the street or any one of the strip malls in the town. So how they qualify this is that the tenants would all have to be small business. So we get a listing every single year of the small businesses within the town, and this would have to be reviewed each year. So the problem with this is the owner of the building gets the exemption and may or may not pass that on to his tenants by lowering their rents.
Sure.
So again, this is geared for another, another type of town where there are a lot of mom-and-pop-owned businesses, and then there may be some large Fortune, you know, 500 companies within the same town. And in this case, it's mostly small business in the town. So it is, has consistently been recommended by the Board of Assessors not to be adopted.
Okay.
If there's any questions about either of those?
Great, thank you. It is an open hearing, so I just wanted to open the floor to anyone who would like to speak. Except, no. Yes, Kevin?
I just, I have two comments I just want to make. One is a small business exemption. If the taxes go up, then we expect the property owner to pass that on to the small business that occupies it and pass on the rent, or typically a true for that reasons anyway. Or, but if there's an exemption, then they wouldn't pass that on. It's kind of counterintuitive that, or that basically, in our case, if there's an exemption, probably the taxing won't go up as much, so that the increase won't be as much, it would be passed on. We need business in this town. Our surrounding towns that compete with us for small businesses, offers. Braintree has it, Avon has it, I believe Randolph has it. You can do up to 10 percent. You don't have even 10 percent. I last checked, the key home was at 7 percent. And what this helps is, you know, I know personally, businesses in town, Garage, a couple of guys working in Garage, they went to Braintree. They went to Braintree, yes, they have, they were getting into a better facility, but the big thing was, they got an exemption on the taxes at 10 percent of what the tax bill would have been. So even though the property was more and the taxes would have been higher, but now they get an exemption because they're a small business. I think that we need to try and look at things. I think I asked last year, do we have a real number on how many properties would actually qualify for this? We get a list, I guess from the state. How many businesses are we talking about? What would the actual impact be? And then try to ascertain, is there, is there a percentage that we can offer that, even if it's only a small percentage, that makes us, we can use it as a tool, that we're open for business. We want to do everything we can to try to drive business and to grow businesses in this town. So that's sort of that piece. The second piece is, I'll use this as a quick math on the phone, it could be off, but if you really want to make a big statement to business that we're open, if you took the shift from 1.69 to 1.51 on the residential side, as Patrick said, it would be an increase. The average increase would be $175 to the, based on the average of the $250,000 average home. But the savings on the commercial side, one, you go from a 39.87 tax rate to 35.62 tax rate, you make a clear statement that we're open for business, and you reduce what that tax would have been by about $1,000 on the average, like a $400,000 property. So they would still, commercials still see a very small increase here, it would be, if you say, hey, we're making a commitment that we're open for business in this town. We want, we want new businesses, we want to grow in this town, so we're going to be committed and we're going to try to balance it with our tax policy. And that's all these decisions that you folks have to make.
Thank you very much.
I think you're, you're right on that, but, you know, stop and shop probably still would be if it weren't for taxes. Mr. McQueen, he told me, he said, your tax rate, the taxes are too high. He didn't say, the taxes are too high. And that is true, what people are paying, and most of, like the Plaza, people that own property in their multiple units within the property, they don't pay, they don't pay any of those taxes. They don't pay any water. They don't pay, people in the stores pay the percentage of the square foot of the area to the building. They pay that amount. 15 percent, you get 15 percent of the building. And so they do get any credit if it went down ever, which it hasn't, and this is going to be a big bump for a lot of people. And I don't know how you get to do it. I really don't. The only way you could do it is if some monstrous business came in and they employed a lot of people, and you split their taxes off amongst the rest of the commercial properties, and you made the shift then. But it would be horrendous for the people that live here, but because of it, the businesses aren't coming in here, and they're not going to jump into it, hoping because of the taxes. And that's all. You do need something like that, but I can't see the townspeople being able to afford it either. It's a catch-22 situation. You need the break, but you need Mullins' property to go commercial to some large, large company. That's what they need, that type of thing.
Kevin?
On the, our biggest, I believe, to be very wrong, I believe that our biggest taxpayer is actually Mullins', the two Mullins' properties in the, in Rainbowwood and Mullins' property. I think that when we look at, you know, we've got Holbrook District now, we're seeing, we're seeing development there. That development, that commercial development, all of those residential units, I was wrong, but are considered commercial property. The apartments are not really considered commercial property?
No, the residential.
Really? All of that, Mullins', Mullins' get the best deal around down there, for the number of units they have, what they're paying in taxes. If they would find those, it'd be a lot more.
Definitely.
Yeah. I remember when they were telling me how much they were paying before. I remember that was 11 years ago, I know the exact figure, but it was way, way low. Maybe it was 200, 300, 300,000, there would be a 269, you know, would fund those, you know, five or six. The apartments- If, uh, the apartments do not bring in the tax, they're hardly bringing in the tax.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else? No? Tim, do you have anything?
Nothing else.
No? Okay. All right, so we have a couple of, um, a couple of decisions in, in front of the board. Uh, one is to, um, uh, put the factor in, uh, for the, um, the tax classification. Uh, the other is to adopt or not to adopt the residential exemption, uh, and, um, uh, also to adopt or not to adopt the small commercial exemption. So we can take these, uh, one at a time? The board pleases?
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted to comment, I think to not vote the way that they are recommending on any of them would be a mistake.
No, I think they're very familiar with, um, with, uh, what's happening, with, um, what other communities are doing, and also the history of this, of this town, so I think I would agree with you. All right. So looking for a motion, um, to classify the town of Holbrook under the Classification Act at a factor of 1.69 for the fiscal year 2017. So it's moved?
Second.
Second Amendment, Mr. McGahee, all those in favor? Move that the, uh, the Board of Selectmen vote not to adopt the residential exemption or the small commercial exemption for the fiscal year 2017. Motion, Second Amendment, Mr. Sheehan, all those in favor? Uh, I do want to, um, thank, uh, Board of Assessors for all the hard work. I know it's, it's, uh, not an easy thing to put, uh, this packet together. Uh, there's a lot of research that goes through it, so, uh, the efforts are definitely very much appreciated. It certainly makes, um, you know, the, uh, the decision, um, very easy to understand and, um, and what the impact would be. Uh, wanted to thank also, um, uh, the town administrator and the assistant town administrator for, for their efforts, uh, and, uh, and obviously, Mr. Costa for, um, uh, expanding on the conversation, giving us something to think about. It, it would be interesting, you know, on Kevin's point, uh, to, to understand how many, uh, businesses would be, um, would, it would be, uh, able to get the, the residential, not the residential, the small commercial exemption. Is that something that we can, we can get in preparation for next year as, as far as what the impact would be?
There was just one, um, um, I think, Mr. Costa had said that surrounding towns have the commercial exemption, and there are only 10 cities and towns in the whole state that have it, and none of them are in this county.
What is that?
There are none in this county with a small residential.
No, not the residential, yeah, the residential, I was talking about the residential, commercial.
I mean, the small commercial, yeah. I don't believe there are any in this county.
I'll get you that information if there is.
Yeah.
Right in the rural community, Mark. Have the commercial.
Again, it is a shift within the class, so, um, I mean, it's nothing to discuss now of our.
Yeah, no, no, but I think just to be able to have, because he raises a good point, you know, we don't even know what that, what that is, what the impact would be, how many small businesses that would, uh, positively impact.
Hmm.
And so it would be good information to have, to consider for next, uh, classification hearing.
Yeah, can definitely put it together.
Perfect.
You can do an awful lot through the shift, as far as, you want the big ones to get it too. You want them to come here.
Yeah.
If you can, you can do it.
Well, the small commercial exemption actually would penalize the larger companies because it shifts to them. It shifts off small business to large, so, um...
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I agree, and I think, you know, in years past, we've also been more, um, business and industry favorable with the shift, uh, but I think understanding, um, you know, what's, what's facing the, the, the normal, uh, taxpayer, the residential taxpayer, uh, you know, the shift this year couldn't be, and we've done it for several years in a row, shifted in favor of the, uh, the commercial and residential, um, commercial, industrial.
I don't think you were here when we did, were you?
No, no. No, we've done it, we've done it several times since I've been here.
So 1.69 for a long time.
But I'm not saying we shifted to 1.51.
When I started the planning committee?
Yeah.
And then it was probably 2009 or '10, there was a tactic by the Board of Selectmen to equalize the percentage increase, so that if it was a 2.8 percent, then both commercial and residential went up 2.8 percent. So it slowly sit down from 1.75 to 1.69, and then you sort of, so I'm, so I'm.
We were 6 points, 1.68, 1.6, yeah, yeah.
We could see the shifts a little bit more to the.
I don't think it's ever been down to 1.69 in my time.
Yeah. So, all right, uh, any other, uh, comments?
No one can afford the tax. Really?
All right.
No one.
Uh, great. Well, I appreciate your help, Patrick. Thank you very much. Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to close the tax classification hearing?
So moved.
So moved? All those in favor? Great. Thank you, everyone.